I would like to put you in forty, I think it is, and so all the, these cops already go.
I heard something about, because that was a telephone thing, I heard something about this, because of the, you know, it's, 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 yeah, J Cox, I mean, I don't, also, to, what?
Mm-hmm.
Before, I don't know, I don't know, yeah, but, yeah, but, yeah. I've got that, uh, you know, it's, it's, I hear from the, and it's, you know, they have two departments, and one's to, like, be, way after the, you know, Senator, James, Bill, Senator, the service department, the service department, for education, everything has a one-street building, they're on both sides.
Mm-hmm. It's, it's, it's.
I'd like to call to order the North Ridgeville Planning Commission meeting for February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Ali?
President.
Groutmann?
Here.
Schuman is excused. Avens?
Here.
Smolik?
Here.
Members of the administration, Chief Building Official Furston?
Here.
Assistant Law Director Morgan?
Here.
Planning and Development Director Lieber?
Here.
City Engineer Evanson?
Here.
Okay, everyone, at this time, can we please stand for the pledge and allegiance of?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Has everyone had a chance to review the meeting minutes from our last meeting on January ninth, two thousand twenty-four? Is there any corrections at this time? Hearing none, those minutes shall stand. Update on the master plan. City of North Ridgeville has a master plan steering committee. Our next meeting is going to be February twenty-first. It's going to be at the Police Department Training Room on the second floor. That's going to be from six to eight P. M. We're going to be discussing the round number three, public input, which was an online process where people just got to basically discuss what they liked about the plan. And then also, we're going to review collectively the master plan as a whole. Director Lieber, do we have any other comments in regards to the master plan?
Just that by Friday, the steering committee will have the final draft available for review for some light weekend reading.
Oh, perfect. It's a, you know, three-day weekend, so you gotta like that. All right, thank you. At this time, Madam Secretary, please read the first applicant.
P P Z twenty twenty-four dash zero two four two, Liberty Elementary School, five seven zero zero, Jay Cox Road, P P N zero seven dash zero zero dash zero two zero dash one one three dash zero zero five. Applicant, North Ridgeville City Schools, three four six two zero Bainbridge Road, North Ridgeville, Ohio. Proposal consists of constructing modular classrooms at Liberty Elementary School. Property's owned, R-one Residence District.
Director Lieber, could we have the findings of fact in the administrative report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The proposal will add eight classrooms, office and breakout workspace, restrooms and storage, and a modular unit to the rear of Liberty Elementary School that's necessary to support their growing enrollment. Schools and other public uses are permitted in the R-one Residence District. The surrounding property is all residential on the northwest, west and south. It's R S two, general residence, and property to the northeast, east, is also R-one, as is this property. You know, for the purposes of this zoning review, Jay Cox Road frontage is considered the front yard. The required rear yard, the setback from the west property line, is fifty feet, and this modular classroom does just meet. So they will be connected to the main building, by an enclosed corridor with two additional means of egress at either end of the structure. At our staff review meeting, and follow-up to that through email, some commentary was shared by the fire department of the need to provide access to the rear of the, of the property, and so revised plans were submitted. That should have been in your, follow-up to your planning commission packet that does show that. If there's any lighting that will be installed, we'll need to see those cut fixtures, but we haven't received that information to date. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a member in the audience who represents this application? Would like to stand up and provide some additional information to the commission on it? Please state your name and address for the record as well.
Inning Commission, Matt Yonker, Director of Operations for North Ridgeville City Schools, three four six two zero Bainbridge Road, Oklahoma, Ohio. As Kim explained, we're a growing school district. We did just pass a bond issued building, new high school. However, that didn't address our needs at our elementary level. So we are looking to install these modular classroom units and tie them directly into the building through a connected corridor. Working with E Mod Construction, our gentleman here, they're helping with this project. We met on-site with the fire department to talk through some of the concerns they had by means of needing to add Fire Access Road and additional fire hydrants. We've worked through and included those in the plans, where we would like to have those installed and believe that they meet the recommendations that the fire department has put forth in terms of code and law from their end. So that's where we're at right now with this project.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm going to open up to the general public on questions or comments on this application. If you have a question or comment, you can come up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Okay, hearing none, I'm going to close the public comments session. And at this time, I will entertain questions and comments from the commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
A question I have, has any consideration been given to actually putting this modular classroom down on grade rather than up on piers? I don't know if anybody wants to answer.
Yeah, once again, just state your name and address for the record and how you're affiliated with this application. Thank you.
I'm Michael Christman. I live at fifty-eight sixty Red Rock Court, Seven Hills, Ohio, and I'm the general contractor for the project, my, with my partner here, Mike Gray. To answer your question, no, we have not considered putting it down in grade, the full This is probably for the cost basis. It was never brought up originally. We weren't sure when we proposed it, you know, the duration of the project, or even, uh, well, it is, it is very costly to put that down below grade in that area. It's a very wet area as well. The foundation below grade would be very close to the level of that drainage creek that runs across the back of the property, so to put a crawl space below grade would probably create some problems, but we have not considered that, to answer your question.
Uh, because, again, as you know, with my experience, I discovered many times, there wasn't much more cost to putting it down on grade when you figured in your skirting costs, your ramps, uh, and that, and that type of thing, plus maintenance that is going to be required for all those items. And also, I'm anticipating these modular classrooms are going to be there for a minimum of five years, more like ten. And by eliminating those ramps and skirting, it eliminates quite a bit of maintenance that they'll need to do down the road. Just, just a thought.
Well, along those lines, the connecting corridor will be masonry and concrete, so there will only be one ramp assembly off the back of the building.
The corridor is rated for one hour?
Pardon me?
The corridor is rated for one hour?
The corridor is actually a two-hour rating.
Two-hour rating?
Yeah, because of the, the structure of the, of the existing building. And then we will have a one-hour rated corridor past a fire barrier wall. So we'll be out twenty feet to the fire barrier wall, two-hour rated corridor, and then we'll have normal commercial one-hour construction to the building from there. And two means of egress out of the corridor area, one out of the rear of the building.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to ask that question as well, because a project that I did for Saint Martin de Por, city of Cleveland acquired two-hour rated walls, or hallway, I should say.
Okay. Okay, is there any other questions or comments? I guess I have one question for clarity. The submission that was presented to the commission, the submission that was presented, the commission had two options, fire, fire hydrant and truck access. Is that meaning the administration's going to pick one, or is that up, and then is that going to be a compacted aggregate path? Or exactly what is that mean?
Okay, initially, we were just creating possibilities for a fire driveway before we met with the Assistant Fire Chief. After meeting with the chief, they rode off of Aspen for a couple reasons. One, because of the drainage ditch and the expense of trying to create a culvert bridge over that, and also the fact that that would leave another opening into the schoolyard from another area, so we're not going to put a driveway there, a fire road, as it's shown on the initial drawing. And speaking with the Assistant Fire Chief, the hydrant on Aspen, where we wanted to pull the one hydrant they initially required, has a low flow. So we are still going to pull one hydrant from there, but we're going to pull another hydrant from the front where the flow is higher. So the plan that we had resubmitted is more accurate to what we are planning to do. And we've hired Lewis Land Professionals out of Wadsworth to do the civil drawings for the site, the design for the hydrants, and the S W P plan.
Okay, so is that, I guess, so the hydrant's going to be within, what, was it two hundred feet?
Three hundred feet.
Three?
Yeah, of any area of the building.
Okay.
And the fire access road is within a hundred fifty feet of, of the area of the new construction, which also now covers the back of the building, which was not covered before.
Okay.
So it's a definite improvement for the life safety issue.
Perfect, thank you. Is there any other further questions or comments from the commission? Okay, hearing none, at this time, the chair will entertain a motion.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Sure, I just had a couple of comments. I know we already talked about the Assistant Fire Chief's concerns, and it sounds like, I mean, that was a recent concern, and I know you've addressed those preliminary on your plans, but eventually, you know, when you do final engineering review, I would ask that you, including your site plans, full utilities, grading, and SWP, so, so that we can ensure all the details are met. And I was also going to offer, I did reach out to the Service Department today, that we could potentially have some asphalt grindings. I didn't know if you had already decided what your material was going to be for the extension of your access drive, but that might be something we could collaborate on to extend that driveway as well.
Absolutely. If you will allow us to put in eight or twelve inches of asphalt grindings and compact it, it would save the school a large, large amount of money, and it's something that they could always pave in the future if they wanted to. But we can get a fairly, a very, you know, substantial road to carry the fire engine, and also fairly smooth with the asphalt grindings, as long as we can get them. So if there's a way, we can get grindings through anywhere, anywhere.
Yeah, I think that might be a possibility, so I already put the request in, if you will, in an effort to partner with you guys. I do want to make one other note, though. I did notice that there is a significant amount of earth disturbing activity, and it looks like a decent amount of impervious surface. So normally, we would require stormwater management to be installed along with these improvements, but I know this is a temporary, hopefully temporary, measure. So in an effort to work with you guys, I would, and to work with the design team, I would ask that you potentially put in a good faith effort, perhaps a water quality measure of some sort, a bio-retention, or some impervious trench.
I would speak like a curtain drain, something like that, to collect and sort
An infiltration trench.
And let it drain, either evaporate or drain into the swale with a smaller pipe, something like that.
I'd be happy to work with you on a, on a design element.
Are you familiar with Lewis Land Pros? Very, uh, they've done a lot of work for us out of Wadsworth, but I will definitely let them know, and we will incorporate that in.
Perhaps the school could even use that as a stormwater education component. That will help with your stormwater utility fee. You could get some credit that way, so we'd be happy to work with you guys on the, on the final design.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And that concludes my comments.
Okay, is there any other staff comments? All right. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the Liberty Elementary School plan to add modular classrooms.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Ali?
Yes.
Groutmann?
Yes.
Avens?
Yes.
Smolik?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am Secretary, please read the second application for tonight.
P P Z twenty twenty-four dash zero two four four, Luwe Apu Asi, three five nine seven zero, Center Ridge Road, P P N zero seven dash zero zero dash zero two one dash one zero two dash zero four zero. Applicant, Khalil Iwaz, Pioneer Engineering, three four nine zero, West Forty-sixth Street, Cleveland, Ohio, four four one zero two. Proposal consists of repurposing Baconato Repair Shop for retail use. Property's owned, B-three Highway Commercial District.
Okay. Director Lieber, could we have a brief description and findings of fact?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This proposal consists of making building and site improvements to the existing commercial property at the northeast corner of Center Ridge and Avon-Beldon roads that's been vacant now for quite a while. The proposed use is grocery retail, which is permitted in the B-three Highway Commercial District, which is what this property's owned. Surrounding property is also commercial, either B-three or B-two. As mentioned previously, the building was used for auto service. It's a very small building, it's just over a twelve hundred square feet. It will be renovated to accommodate a food mart. The overhead doors on the west face will be replaced with entrance and windows with brick below to match the existing masonry. On the south face, one man door is going to be removed and infilled with brick, another door is going to be replaced. One of my requests was to make sure any brick was toothed in, so it doesn't look like, you can't see where the old window or door was, but really matches the building. The existing windows are going to be replaced and the brick extended, and the siding will be re-canted. So it's a pretty significant facelift to this building, which sorely needs it. There's also site improvements proposed, a six-foot wide walk around much of the building, a new curved asphalt parking lot, a new wood dumpster enclosure and landscaping, the wood fence that was kind of falling down, I believe, has been removed recently. So this site is very challenging from a zoning perspective, because it's an undersized lot, you know, it's two frontages, both roads, and, you know, the lot shrunk as a result of the Center Ridge Road widening project. The code requires ten feet of open space along each road frontage, which has kind of miraculously been provided here, but it has shrunk the parking lot. Our code requires one parking space per two hundred square feet of gross floor area. In this case, you know, seven spaces would be required and eight are provided, so it's kind of, there's still available asphalt to maneuver vehicles through. We did speak with the fire department, and they would not bring in a big truck on the site, that any, you know, an ambulance could get to the site, but any type of firefighting vehicle, they would use the street as their, and shut down the road as their point of access. There's just no way you could really maneuver vehicles around, of that size, around this site. The, there's going to just be the one existing curb cut onto Avon-Beldon to be reused, and then no additional curb cuts are warranted in this case. The applicant does propose to install a sign on the brick wall extension above the roof. That will be an issue for the B Z B A, as our updated sign code does not permit roof signs, so that is something that will head their way once they make application for that. We had discussed with the applicant in our staff review meeting if there were any new building or site lights. They said they intend to reuse the building lights. We also discussed, along with water quality issues, any potential changes to landscape plan. The fire department had some concerns about tree placement with visibility getting in and out of the curb cut, so had suggested just to look hard at the location of the landscaping to make sure that there's visibility. But I'll say that I'm at least happy there's a plan for some landscaping at this corner of, in the center of town, so that will be, kind of, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments from the staff or administration?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I share Ms. Lieber's concerns regarding access. I would ask that the applicant also include some kind of striped-out area for maneuverability, just for the patrons alone, to ensure that there's accessibility and maneuverability to get in and out of the site. We have also made the applicant aware that we would like to have water, a water quality measure be implemented, since they are doubling their impervious surface with the existing condition. Other than that, I don't have any further comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other further administrative questions? Okay, at this time, is there a member in the audience who represents this application? All right, come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and then tell us a little bit about this application.
Yeah, my name is Khalil Iwaz, with Pioneer Engineering. My address is three four nine zero, West Forty-sixth Street, Cleveland, four four one oh two. In addition to the improvements mentioned, we're also doing interior improvements, updating the H V A C, electrical, drywall, that kind of stuff. We will accommodate the comments from, from the city as far as the striping plan for the parking lot. Regarding the water quality, we, we were able to reduce the impervious area by thirty percent, in excess of thirty percent. So it is our understanding that no water quality measures would be required.
That's one of the actions.
Okay. And as stated previously, also, there was a previous roadway project that reduced the lot area, it acquired right-of-way for the project, so it was challenging to make things work on, on that site. So those are pretty much our, our improvements and our project.
Okay, thank you. At this time, is there any questions or comments from the general audience? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Okay, hearing none, the public comments session is closed. At this time, I will take public, or I should say, questions and comments from the commission. Go ahead.
Looking at your plan and that, and quite frankly, I'm glad somebody's looking at that property, but concern is getting out of that particular parking lot, that site, that's going to be difficult at times for folks to do. I'm not quite sure what the answer to that is. And, and the other question I would have, when you say a food mart, explain, please, I'm not quite sure what that will mean.
Food mart, basically a, a small grocery store, beverages, you know, coffee, donuts, chips, you know, things of that nature. Maybe a small deli case, you know, kind of speaking for the owner.
I guess I have some questions and then some comments. During the staff meeting, the owner discussed there's a possibility of a food and restaurant tenant going into this space. So obviously, that's changed, it's now more streamlined into this.
As of now, nothing's materialized with an alternative use, so we've proceeded with the mercantile establishment.
Okay. And then I noticed there's some coolers inside there.
No, no, no coolers inside.
Well, I guess beverage coolers, not the walk-in coolers, just your normal.
No, no, there's nothing in there. What's shown in the plan is proposed stuff. Is that what, what you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, it's all proposed, just a layout of what we envision the interior to, to accommodate.
So if, perhaps if you are putting some type of coolers, or, you know, where would the condensers go?
Probably on, on the north face wall.
And then that would take up a parking spot?
No, there, there's a, a three-foot sidewalk area there, so we would probably use that area for that purpose.
I guess my concerns are the parking as well. There's some, you know, there's some projects that, you know, we're trying to jam too much into one space, and I think this happens to be one of them. I realize the code requires a certain amount of parking, but how usable that parking is, I don't know. I think there's going to be at times a lot of congestion in there, people not knowing where to go, and then also, like, when the dumpster needs picked up, there could be a car in front of it, so, yeah, I'm not, I'm not really in favor of this application based on, you know, just, the site is, I understand the constraints associated with the roadway widening, but I think as a community, we shouldn't, you know, lower our standards when we can't, you know, have a, you know, a business where parking and maneuverability just isn't, isn't right for the motoring public.
Can I speak?
Go ahead.
We did an exercise for the city as part, part of the review process. We utilized a turn-in radius for a front-end load dump truck, and we showed that could maneuver properly in, in, in a parking lot. You know, it, it is a small, challenging site, and with what we're working with, we believe it can work. You know, it's, it's a, it's a grocery store, people in and out, people don't come all at once, it's not like a, a really busy establishment, so we believe, like, the eight spots provided. And then usually, my experience with dumpster pickup, it's early morning hours when there's really not much traffic at the site. So, you know, with all due respect, you know, we, we feel confident with our layout.
Okay. Is there any further questions or comments from the commission? Okay, at this time, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the proposed convenience storm mart at eighty-three and Center Ridge Road.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second it.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Ali?
Yes.
Groutmann?
Yes.
Avens?
Yes.
Smolik?
No.
Motion carries three to one.
Madam Secretary, please read the third application.
P P Z two zero two four dash zero two four five, Wink Bell Incorporated, three six eight eight five, Center Ridge Road, P P N zero seven dash zero zero dash zero two eight dash one zero three dash zero zero one and dash zero zero two. Owner, Wink Bell Incorporated, five six four zero, Broad Boulevard, North Ridgeville, Ohio, four four oh three nine. Proposal consists of an addition to existing building, parking expansion and lot consolidation. Property's owned, B-five Architectural Business District.
Okay, Director Lieber, could we have your insight on this and also findings of fact?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I misplaced my report, so I was just, I wanted to find it. Thank you. This proposal consists of a building addition and site improvements to an existing commercial property. This is at the southeast corner of Center Ridge and Matic Roads. Tonight must be the repurpose of exist, of existing buildings on tough corners night. The building was originally built and operated by A T and T as a relay station. The proposed use is, could be office or any other permitted use in the B-five District. Just to clarify, the report that for the purposes of this project, because there is no tenant signed yet, that we looked at office, which has a high-ish parking ratio to determine what would be adequate parking for this rather sizable building. But it could be office tenants, or it could be anything else that might be permitted in the B-five District. Surrounding property on the northeast and west are also zoned commercial, and property to the south is zoned R-one Residence District, which kicks some buffering requirements into effect in this case. So the applicant is proposing to make the building more useful for commercial use by constructing an addition that will house an elevator, restrooms, a main entrance lobby, and utilities serving the building. The addition will be made of split-faced block in a light color with steel siding and metal roof. The parapet will be tall enough to hide mechanical equipment. Colors were picked not to try to match exactly the building, but to kind of respect the existing building and to complement it. Also, the parking lot is a significant improvement. Again, it was designed based on a fifty-fifty split of medical office and general office. The applicant has used previous pavement to promote drainage. It's a tough, there's no It's a tough, there's no storm sewers in this area. Sidewalks will be incorporated on Matic. And then also, there will be an extension of the Center Ridge Road trail across the frontage of this property. That will be a 10-foot wide asphalt path. They've incorporated the decorative post-style lighting that's required in the B5 district to illuminate the parking lot. And then they've ensured that they've met the height requirement for lights because the southern bank of lights are within 50 feet of residential property. So some of the existed wooded area to the east will be removed for the parking lot. However, existing trees to the east and south will be preserved. The applicant's proposed buffering along the south property line with concentrations of plant materials that's closest to that house and the accessory structure to the south. The B5 district is also kind of unique amongst all of our commercial districts with its design requirements. It does indicate that parking areas should be buffered from the front of the street. However, I'd say the commission has some discretion to interpret what is sufficient in terms of plantings between the parking lot and the street. And again, has some broad discretion in that area. The commission can also consider if any additional screening would be needed to fill in any gaps to, along that southeast corner to, if there are any openings, to protect that neighbor, that next-door neighbor. Applicant has included a couple potential locations for two ground signs that would be permitted on a corner because of the two frontages. But no sign package has been submitted. Of course, there's no tenants yet, so it would be premature. But one of the issues we brought up in staff review is just to make sure any sign would be set back far enough from that Center Ridge Road trail that the sign wouldn't get too close to where pedestrians and bikes might be zinging by, just for safety. I think that concludes my report, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments from the administration?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
Engineering has been working with the applicant's design team, and the plans are progressing quite nicely. They are taking advantage of the sandy soils in this corridor, as you may know, along Center Ridge. We do have a lot of sandy soils, and they're implementing the pervious pavers, which will look very similar to the LCC parking lot. I think that'll be a nice addition to the project. We've also asked them to put in the 10-foot wide multipurpose trail along the frontage on Center Ridge. Our hopes is, I think there's less than a dozen properties between where the property, or where the asphalt trail ends with the Center Ridge Road binding project and this particular project, that hopefully we could fill in in the next few years. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there a member in the audience who represents this application?
Hi, Cliff Winkle, 5640 Broad Boulevard, North Ridgeville. Thank you for the planning commission, members of administration, for allowing us to talk about our project tonight. A lot of this has been explained already, but what we were trying to do is take a building that has not really had a discernible use for decades and try to make it useful again. So the building is a split-level building, so the grade level is actually between the basement and the first floor, which creates a problem with ADA access. Hence the reason why we want to put a tower on the back to house an elevator, another stairwell. And we're also going to house mechanical infrastructure in that tower, meaning bathrooms on each floor and HVAC and mainly the ADA access the elevator would provide. We did decide to use permeable pavers for reasons stated earlier, and also, I think it, you know, almost adds to the spirit of the area, the B5 area, what we're trying to accomplish there. And that's basically it. I know we might be putting the cart before the horse in a way we don't have a tenant. We're trying to make the building presentable to find one. Because this building is not capable of being used right now. So that's why we came up with a plan. Right now, I think there's like six parking spots there in the back, you know, and there's no ADA access. So that's what we're trying to accomplish first. And any tenants that would come in, or talked about the signs earlier, we would definitely come to the city and pull our full permits and make sure we are completely code compliant with everything.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the general public? Go ahead, please state your name and address for the record.
Wayne Fox, 36777 Center Ridge Road. I am the property just east of that. It's zoned B5, however, it's grandfathered from residential. If you go back to the overhead site, you can see my house right at the corner of the lot that is to the right of the yellow box. That parcel that is not in the yellow box was just consolidated into, before approval here. Oh, I do need to back up. Somehow or another, I was overlooked, I didn't receive a letter about tonight. I found out from the south neighbor who is also here. However, at the corner where that additional parcel is, you can see just a very little gray box. I don't know if you can see, if you want me to go over and tap it out, but that corner of that building is my bedroom. According to the blueprints, the tree line that's going to be staying, that's on the southeast, kind of not really the corner of that property, shows it as a tree line. It's a bunch of dead trees and brush that's going to have to be cleaned out, so it's going to be completely blown out. And on the west side of that tree line is, 94 feet from the corner of my house, is the proposed dumpster area. If it's medical, there's not going to be any type of odors associated with it. But if it happens to be any type of food place, restaurants, bars, anything like that that comes in, all odors from the garbage are going to come straight into my bedroom. And above me is my daughter. Mentioning daughters, regardless of the businesses that go there, with, I think I counted about 85 parking spaces in there. There are a lot of little kids on the south property. I have a child. The box to the east of my property, there are several little kids that live in there. And then off-screen, the next property, there are also children that live there. There's a lot of concern on what's going to happen with the development of it all. Lighting coming into my bedroom, noise, sound. I work some midnight, so during the day, there's going to be some issues with that. The blueprints do show some buffering for the south property because they're residential. But because the city, at some point before we took ownership of the property, relisted ours as B5, it's not being acknowledged that we need to have some type of privacy buffer instead of just a dilapidated tree line that is not going to be able to stay. I mean, I'd say 95% of the trees in that whole thing is all dead. So I just don't know how it should all be addressed.
Okay. I guess first off, for the administration, a B5, what could go into a B5?
Many different kinds of retail and consumer services, restaurants.
A restaurant can go into B5? Okay. Thank you. And then...
Mr. Chair, can I make one other clarification?
Yes.
Because there's a dwelling next door, buffering is still required, even when it's a commercially zoned property if it's a residential use. So, but again, it's, I think the commission has some discretion as to, again, the combination of existing plant materials and then proposed plant materials in order to create a sufficient screen. So you have that authority.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant have any comments in regards to the questions posed on the floor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I actually talked to Mr. Fox a few times on the phone. I actually shared these drawings with him, and I'm all about wanting to be a good neighbor to everybody around me. I would say that if there's any sort of lack of natural buffering on the east side because there's dead trees or, you know, things that are kind of created an open area, then I would just plant what I need to, to make sure there is a natural buffer like we're proposing on the south side. I have no problem with that. We want to make sure we had enough space. When we designed this, I asked my civil engineer and architect here, I want at least 50 feet, no less, between myself and the east property. And I think the closest point I was 55 for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other further questions or comments from the audience? All right, hearing none, the public comments session is closed. Is there any questions or comments from the commission? I guess I have some questions. And these are from the staff reports. The overhead utilities that need to be buried in a B5 district, I guess, was there any leeway with the utility companies on getting those buried? If someone's going to answer, you have to go up to the podium. State your name and address for the record, thank you.
David Brott with Bowen and Associates, 2019 Center Street, Cleveland, Ohio. All the utilities to the building currently are underground, and so we had no intention of changing those.
Okay, all right. I just saw in the staff report, and I thought on the plans it showed overhead. I could be wrong. And I think that is it. Does anybody else have any other further questions or comments? All right, at this time, the chair will entertain a motion. I'd make a motion to approve the development plan for Ohio Bell Building. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Ali?
Discussion?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I would like to add a condition, that the administration will look at the buffering requirements along the south property line and then along that existing dwelling to the east to provide additional buffering with evergreens and/or other planting materials they deem fit. Was there any further discussion on that condition? Okay. At this time, please call roll.
Ali?
Yes.
Grotman?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Smolik?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Okay, ma'am secretary, please read the fourth application for tonight.
Ordinance number 2024-4. An ordinance amending zoning map of the city of North Ridgeville such that permanent parcel number 07-00-023-101-074, located at 8371 Avon Belden Road, be rezoned from R1 Residence District to I2 Light Industrial District.
Okay, Director Lieber, findings of fact, and then your insight on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The city recently entered into a purchase agreement with the owner of this 46-acre parcel off of Avon Belden Road. Then the long-term intent of the city is to foster some new economic opportunities by developing the property for potential light industrial use. Presently, the area is not served by utilities, so there's still some long-term plans that would need to come together. We have no immediate development plans. Our intent would be to allow the property to continue to be farmed until we can create a development-ready site. At that time, we could bring forward those plans to the community for their detailed scrutiny, so that they would be able to see a site plan, the development of any roads, how surrounding properties might be impacted, screened, et cetera. Typically, when we look at rezonings, we always ask ourselves, is this consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city? As you know, beyond the steering committee, we're currently in the process of updating our master plan. So we don't really have an adopted master plan that speaks to this, but our draft plan does. And our draft plan has acknowledged the feedback we received from the community and the overabundance of new housing that has taken place in North Ridgeville in the last 20 years. Some of the stress and burden that that can put on city services and the need to preserve and reserve lands for economic generating land uses. So this is the city's proactive attempt to provide opportunity for economic development in a location that seemed well-suited to it. And it would be consistent with that master plan if it should be adopted as currently drafted.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments from the administration? All right, hearing none. Is there a representative?
It's not really an application, it's just a recommendation to council on legislation.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments from the general public? If so, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Leroy Zeski, 8225 Avon Belden Road, so I would be right up there. So actually, I'm kind of more thrilled that this is happening than maybe development back there. So I'm kind of happy about that. Just because I'm not as familiar with this, and I've enjoyed the view of the property for years, I love it. Somebody's going to build it, that's understood. I would just be concerned that, hey, what if there were salt trucks and I heard beep, beep, beep all night long? Or, you know, lighting of an area that, you know, I'm living in an airport-like environment. So just what my environment would look like and buffering and things like that, I'm not as familiar with this, those would be my concerns.
Does the administration have some comments in regards to those?
Yes. You know, I mentioned that any project that would come before the city would go through a detailed planning review. So, you know, we can't envision today who might be interested in this property, what kind of businesses there would be. But there will be every opportunity to listen to resident concerns and to ensure that we lead by example as a city at that kind of high-quality development that we'd like to see. I'll also point out that, you know, we're, in the timeframe that we're planning for utilities for this area, we're also going to be going through a comprehensive zoning update. And one of the problem areas I see with our current industrial district is that there isn't as much protection for surrounding neighboring properties as there could be. And that perhaps, you know, we could add in some development standards to ensure that there's appropriate setbacks, enough buffering, that we cap the height of lighting, some of those concerns that this neighbor brought up. So I feel like, you know, the time it will take to make a development-ready site will also allow us the time it will take to update our zoning code to make sure that the code reflects the kind of development that neighbors will support.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other further questions or comments from the general audience? Okay, hearing none, public comments session is closed. Is there any questions or comments from the commission? Go ahead, Councilman.
Comment that I would have is those residential properties that border it, I'm thinking that the city may be interested in purchasing those properties as they become available. And that would alleviate some of the issues. Doesn't mean we would force them out, it's just when they would come up on the market, that the city would be interested in purchasing that property. Just a thought.
All right, is there any other questions or comments? I guess I have some comments. I'm the planning commission member on the master plan steering committee. So I've been through all the sessions where we learned basically the status of the city. And it's no secret, right now, City of North Ridgeville is a bedroom community. And in order for a community to be successful, you have to have a balanced mix of residential, commercial, and industrial. So the decisions we make now are going to affect us 20 years from now. But it's important that we make the correct decisions so that the city continues to flourish. And I think this is one of them where there's a unique opportunity here that where we could provide an industrial area or commercial, and then provide some economic development. Otherwise, it would be turned into a subdivision. And as everyone knows, right now, we have all kinds of subdivisions, and it's definitely a strain on our public streets and our emergency services. So I think this is definitely a move in the right direction. Like I said, these are going to be challenging decisions to make on these rezoning, but I think now's the time where we have to start. Thank you. Is there any other further questions or comments? All right, at this time, the chair will entertain a motion. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance 2024-4.
Second.
Okay, ma'am secretary, please call roll.
Ali?
Yes.
Grotman?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Smolik?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. All right. At this time, our administrative approvals and zoning certificates, I believe we have one. Director Lieber, if you want to just give us a brief description of this?
Sure. How recently approved was the... Recently approved was the future installation of a Tesla EV charging station at Starbucks. This is the first of what I think are going to be many such applications to retrofit parking lots in the city with EV charging. There's another pending application, I think, for Super Eight Motel on Lorraine Road. Typically, these installations occur in existing parking stalls, just adding equipment. So not really rising to the level of a detailed planning commission review, but should substantial parking lot changes be made, we'll certainly bring those to the commission. Also, this is another topic to add to our zoning update list is, you know, new technologies emerge, our codes often don't keep up, and we need to think about where the most appropriate places for these are in our community.
Okay. And then the last item is the Ohio Sunshine Law. I asked the administration if they could provide some, you know, guidance and/or possible some literature on the commission so the commission members could update themselves on the Ohio Sunshine Law. And they provided this great document with a bunch of questions or, or I should say, a bunch of text in here on exactly what the Ohio Sunshine Law is and what our duties as a commission member in regards to this. Does the administration have any additional input on this? Maybe the lodger, assistant lodger?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I did put together a few notes, and I'm a scribbler and a doodler, so I would be embarrassed if you actually saw what was in front of me right now. It's a mess, nobody can read it but me. But I was, when I was asked about the sunshine laws, I didn't know exactly what you wanted to hear. So what I thought I would do was not only, first of all, there's the handout, and I gave you everybody a copy. It's only about five or six pages long. And for something that's so brief, it's generated a lot of case law and controversy. So I thought I would just go over just briefly what it is, and then I thought it would be more interesting if I also gave an outline of a couple of cases that have been decided in the court, some of the more interesting ones.
That'd be great. Just for clarity, if you're an elected official, you have to do this training every two years? Whatever, there's a timeframe. But us volunteers on the commission level, we don't actually formally have to have this training, so I think this is going to be good insight for us. Thank you.
Okay, well, hopefully it is. And as always, if you have, and if anybody in the public doesn't, is not the least been interested in this, you can leave. Yeah, I won't, I won't. Yeah, no, I won't torture you as well. So first of all, the Public, the Open Meeting Act or the Sunshine Law in the ORC, the Ohio Vice Code, is one twenty-one twenty-two. That's what I gave you a copy of. And generally speaking, it has very limited requirements. It has to be an open meeting, like this one is, by a public body, and certainly the Planning Commission qualifies as a public body. And a requirement is that the members have to be present. That was lifted for a little while during COVID, but you never know when that could happen again. But you have to be present in order to vote, in order to make up a quorum. But there's actually a lot more smaller requirements because minutes are a requirement as well. You can violate the open meeting law by not doing minutes or not doing sufficient minutes. As I said, it has to be in person, has to be open to the public, so you can't make a room so small or so remote that nobody can get to it, so it has to be open. There are notice requirements to the public that we have to go by. And a meeting is something that they consider to be, they use the word "pre-arranged." We have a certain time, it's going to be set for, a certain location, so it's a pre-arranged meeting. As you'll see when I go through the couple of cases that I picked out to review here, that this law is to be liberally construed. So it's not like the exact letter. Pre-arranged can be something that's a little looser than what you might think of, then you have a schedule and you have to stick to it. And it has to be a discussion of public business, and it has to be by a majority of the members. So those are the basic requirements. So what I wanted to do for you is go through a couple of cases where the requirements weren't met. And the first one, which I found kind of interesting, of course, I'm a geek on this stuff, so, but I think you'll like this one. In nineteen ninety-six, this particular one was one of the first ones where they said, no, you cannot have serial meetings to circumvent the requirements of the open meetings law. So this was the case called Cincinnati Post versus the City of Cincinnati. And the way this one started was, the city of Cincinnati had been told by the owner of the Bengals that if they didn't build them a new stadium, the Bengals were going to move to Baltimore. And at the same time, the Reds, I'm not a sports person, so, these are new to me, the Cincinnati Reds also wanted a new stadium, and they wanted to be separate from the Bengals. And they were looking at sites in Kentucky. So this was something that the council in Cincinnati would have to approve. And neither one of them were happy at that time with the county-owned Riverfront Stadium. So the city manager in Cincinnati, in order to discuss the options, because the city council would be the ones that would have to approve it, he set up a meeting where, and this was in June twenty-first, he set up a series of meetings, three different sets of back-to-back meetings with council members. But in none of the meetings were a majority of people present. So no public notice was given, and there was never a majority of members. So they had these meetings, back-to-back-to-back. Eventually, on June twenty-ninth, council held a special meeting, and it was open to the public, and they approved the arrangement on a five-to-four vote. And this is where the Cincinnati Post came in and the minutes. Cincinnati Post asked for the minutes from the closed-door meetings, the ones that weren't open to the public. And ultimately, the courts ruled that those back-to-back meetings, taken together, were attended by a majority of the members. That was city business, therefore, it had to have been open, so they violated the open part of the meeting. And they also violated, the statute prevents this type of serial meetings and the clear intent of the law. It wasn't open, and it wasn't, and notice wasn't given. So that was the first time that they decided, even though there's nothing in the exact wording of the statute that would say you can't have a serial meeting, they decided that by doing that, and even though there were never a majority of the members present, that you can't do that because it circumvents what we call the spirit of the law as opposed to the letter of the law. So fast forward twenty years later, and the same law, the same case ends up influencing a later case. So in twenty sixteen, there was, the courts had to interpret the open meetings law again, and this one came with a school board. The case was called White versus King. And that recognized that meetings take place face-to-face, but also, it can be a meeting if it's telephonic, if it's a video conference, if it's an email, if it's a text. And I'm, to this day, there's, those words still don't appear in there, but through case law, it's been liberally construed, and it's bigger than it used to be. So this starts out with the Olin Tangi School Board, it had five members. And both White and King were members of the school board. A problem developed, and Mr. White continues to be, he just won't do what he's supposed to do. He's the rogue in this. He's the one who pushes this case all the way through, all the way to the Supreme Court, as a matter of fact. Mr. White had, independent of the other members of the board and independent of any of the school authorities, undertaken an investigation of a couple of athletic directors, all on his own. And ultimately, those athletic directors, one of them resigned, and both of them ended up having to put, to pay for some expenditures that had never gotten approved properly. They had to pay it back to the school. But when Mr. King and the other members heard about this, they were dissatisfied, not so much with what had happened, but with the way White had done it. So they passed a new policy, and their new policy said that if there's going to be contact between the board and staff members of the school, it has to go through either the superintendent or the treasurer. So this is the point, again, where the newspaper is getting involved. The newspaper in Cincinnati published an editorial, and it was in praise of Mr. White for what he had done. He was, again, he was our rogue for voting, and he had voted against this new policy, and they praised him for it. So this made Mr. King a little angry. And he proposed that the other school board members, the superintendent, some staff members, that they write a response to this editorial. And you know, that's never a good idea, to write a response to the editorial in the paper. As a matter of fact, there ended up being two responses to it, but they did it. And everybody voted to do it except White, of course, he said no. And so the newspaper published the response, both the responses in the paper. So a little time passes, and six months later, Mr. White, Mr. Troublemaker all the time, being the rogue that he was, and he wasn't going to take this. So first, he files a lawsuit against the school board members, and he alleged there was a violation of the Open Meetings Act, of the sunshine law. And secondly, at the same board meeting, he moved that no school money be spent defending Mr. King or the other school board members, or that they not be reimbursed for the lawsuit that he had filed against them. Now, he made that motion, but there was no second, so it died, and that didn't happen. So there's lots of procedural details within that particular case, but the short version of it is, when it went to trial court, the trial court ruled in favor of Mr. King and his supporters, and here's why. They said that, first of all, they didn't think there had been a pre-arranged meeting, and this was trial court level, this is step one, and a discussion of public business among the board members because the only communication had been an unsolicited email from King. And they mentioned that one twenty-one twenty-two, which is the open meetings law or the sunshine law, doesn't apply to emails. And like I said, I don't think it's in there today. It doesn't apply to emails, so they felt pretty confident about it. And there was no pending rule or resolution before the board regarding the matter when they decided to respond to the editorial. So the court ruled against Mr. White, but you know Mr. White, he's not going to let that stand. So Mr. White appeals it to the appellate level, and he lost again. And a quote from the appellate court said, "The definition of a meeting does not include sporadic emails," and that the emails did not discuss public business because at the time they were exchanged, there was no pending rule or resolution before the board. And despite the fact that the board later ratified the response to the editorial of the newspaper, that ratification did not retroactively create a pre-arranged discussion of public business. Plus, they added, and I quote, "Mere discussion of an issue of public concern does not mean there were no deliberations under the statute." So at this point, if you're Mr. King and the rest of the school board, you're feeling pretty good. You've gone through a trial court, you've gone through the appellate court, they completely agree with you. Mr. White, Mr. Rogue, is wrong. So at this point, there's nowhere to go for Mr. White, except the Supreme Court. And knowing Mr. White, he goes there. He goes to the Supreme Court. Not only does he go there, but one of the cases that he argues at that time was the first one we discussed, the Cincinnati Post case. He takes that with him to support his position. He used that decision, which prohibited serial meetings by less than a majority, to privately discuss city business. White argued that King violated open meetings by pre-arranging a private discussion regarding the board's response to the newspaper editorial, and that a majority of school board members participated in that discussion. He also argued, using the Cincinnati Post case, that King and the board's discussion of public business via electronic means, and this is the first time the court had ruled in this way, that via electronic means subverts the purpose of the Open Meetings Act. Again, it's the spirit or the intention of the law. You can't do something creative just to get around that. And that incremental electronic communications of any kind does violate the law. So as you probably figured out, rogue Mr. White prevailed at the Ohio Supreme Court, and they concluded that serial email communications by a majority of board members regarding response to public criticism of the board can constitute a private, pre-arranged discussion of public business, and that it was a violation. So those two cases, twenty years apart, one supports the other. And that's sort of a tutorial, if you will, of how the courts take what the words are, and they do the interpretation. And anytime there's public access, whether it's public records, public meetings, the courts liberally construe them. So they will give them the broadest possible meaning that it can have. So that case is the one that said, even electronically, you can't meet as well. So anyhow, I won't, this is why I enjoy what I do, because the facts behind the decisions are sometimes the most interesting part. But at any rate, any kind of discussion by a majority of the members, especially if they're close together in time, even though they might not be a majority at the time, can still constitute a meeting under the open meetings law. And then you would have had to have public access, you would have had minutes, you would have notice and those things, so you can violate it in any number of ways. So that's all I have for you. But if you have any questions, especially in the future, let me know, and I'll try to, I'll try to find an interesting case to go with it.
No, actually, you pulled stuff straight out of the headlines now with some of the new Browns information coming out there, so. So that was very insightful, thank you. At this time, is there any additional new business brought before the commission? Hearing none, our planning commission meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, good night.